Before we get into any of that, we have a public comment section of the evening. If anyone here who's not leaving right now, who's left standing or sitting, who has anything to say other than what we're about to talk about, feel free to raise your hand. We'll start, all right? Oh yeah, I guess we have some newbies here tonight, so we can go around the table some. I think everyone, I think, has been introduced. Why don't we go around, Carolyn, start with you, and just go around the table and introduce everybody?
Carolyn Nash, real estate planning, sustainability. Jan Brooks.
John Buntz.
Dan Felton.
Ivan, real estate planning sustainability.
Mark Sullivan.
Devin Bruce. Carla Youngblood.
Alan Versum.
Bill Grinell.
So welcome, you guys. And let's begin. What do you got, Carolyn?
So, the first item is, and I'll put it on the screen here, but you guys have looked at this language a couple of times now since we started moving back to it after it went through council. And the last time we looked at the language, sorry. There was one aspect of it that you all were uncomfortable with, and that was the pick list essentially. Sorry, I don't know what they mean. The pick list for options for special permit included mechanisms to achieve some of the goals in the plan. It included LEED certification, affordable housing, small footprint housing. And you guys wanted us to work with the building department to come up with some other choice other than using LEED as a standard. So basically, we went back and looked at that and then brought the whole business back hoping that we'll wrap it up at this session and we can send it on to council so that we could be ready for an April hearing with the goal that this whole language that we're about to talk about will replace the moratorium that would otherwise expire in July for the construction of more than seven units in the urban residential B and C districts. So I'll just start at the top here with the language of, and this ordinance that I sent you, you guys had a copy of, and you've seen before, is just for the URB, but the same language would apply in URC except that it applies to multifamily and townhouse. Where in URB, we only allow single, two, and three family units, and then other units are only allowed at a townhouse project by special permit. So that's why it specifies down on the second page with just special permit. But the same language will just carry over for the URC district. It'll have to come in as a separate ordinance in the package. So we talked about, let's see, we have really good technology here. We talked about adding the requirement for site plan approval if you're creating a new separate detached structure on a lot that already has a structure on it. So that's what that first item is. And if you remember, the B and C districts have in the table, there's a list of all the uses by right, followed by uses by site plan, and then uses by special permit. The reason why what you're seeing here are just additions to site plan and special permit is because those are the only pieces of the ordinance that was adopted in September that are proposed to be modified. And then, of course, in the special permit section that we have gone over a couple of times now is this first item, the first strikeout is just this bullet here, upon completion of the nine-month moratorium. So this would be deleted from the current ordinance, and then the following bulleted points would then be substituted in to replace the moratorium. So the design standards that you guys have talked about to address the concern of the creation of more than seven and 10 units, there were two different thresholds. So the idea was to just have one threshold to simplify it. So instead of having a design threshold that would just hold for 10 units, this design threshold would carry over for any construction of seven or more units. So first road buildings along a street shall face the street and add to the streetscape to the extent possible. There shall not be any parking except incidental to a driveway or roadway between the first road buildings and the street. We really want those buildings up at the street and the parking behind so that that neighborhood's streetscape can be maintained. All projects, I'm sorry, driveways and roadways that provide access to buildings must be pedestrian-focused and not dominated by parking. Number two, all projects shall ensure that connectivity to the street is attained, including making streetscape between the property and the road pedestrian-friendly and in performance with the city's best practices. Such streetscapes include rebuilding as necessary the granite curbs, ADA-compliant concrete sidewalks, tree belts, and when possible, rain gardens and appropriate drainage improvements. So this is the area in the right of way in front of these potential structures that might need some upgrades to bring them up to current code if they are in a deteriorated state. Then going on to page two. Projects shall connect to all surrounding neighborhoods with year-round bicycle and pedestrian access to the extent possible. That's to create, make sure that these neighborhoods are built in isolation, that you have some connectivity. And year-round so that any party that's responsible needs to clear of snow so that it's not, you know, only available in the spring, summer, and fall. Driveways and roadways shall internally and externally connect and avoid dead ends whenever possible. Dead end roadways and driveways shall never exceed 500 feet, which is the same standard we have for subdivision. And those must include bicycle and pedestrian connections in the dead-end street to a park or civic space. Driveways and roadways shall either have separate sidewalks or redesign as shared streets focused on pedestrians and bicyclists and engineered to keep speeds below 15 miles per hour. All projects shall include a park or civic space that serves as a focal point of the project, is easily accessible, available, and desirable for residents of the project. And buildings that are existing residential properties shall incorporate building articulation and well-designed side façades. Building projections shall be incorporated for any side facade that is longer than 30 feet. Front façades shall have similar setbacks as other buildings in the area or provide a different setback that is consistent with the location, either close to setbacks in urban areas or different setbacks because of the natural resource constraints. And six and seven were already in the ordinance. And then eight, buildings shall meet either, and this is a section that you all wanted us to work on, shall meet a home energy rating system rating of 45, or the U.S. Green Building Council LEED New Construction New Development Gold certified, or contain 15% of the unit, meaning there's no definition of affordability, or contain 50% or more of the unit for larger than 1,200 square foot area for at least five years on issuance of certificate of occupancy, or a combination of the items A through D if approved by the board. Special permits filed under this provision may be submitted for review and approval prior to and separately from fully engineered site plans so long as the following items are identified in any preliminary site plan with a special permit. And full detailed engineered site plans are filed for review and approval prior to commencement of construction. So we will need in those site plans roadway or driveway alignments showing compliance with the connectivity standards, buffers, and preliminary landscaping abiding existing neighborhoods, proposed location of parks and open space, building envelopes and location, anticipated building types and the total number of units. And then a statement that in any special permit approval granted with only preliminary site plan, the board may establish thresholds in which the amendment of that special permit is required either prior to or in parallel with review of fully engineered plan. So again, a lot of these design concepts came from concerns from the neighborhood, and then we had this follow-up Lyman Estate sort of focused meeting where additional concerns about, certainly about energy efficiency and affordable housing and sort of trying to target smaller house options for people came up, which is why those got included in this pick list. And we did keep one of the, I'm going to go back and talk about the energy piece a bit, the HERS rating of 45. The building commissioner and I talked back and forth extensively about that and what number to, you know, to select based on the fact that the stretch code is changing. And currently, the stretch code requires a HERS of?
50, I think.
Or is it 60?
What, 70?
I think it's 60, actually. So going to 45 would represent, you know, 20% improvement over that, but then we don't exactly know where the stretch code is going. But that looking at all the projects that have come forward, it would be pretty hard for everyone to hit 45. I mean, it's not hard as an impossible, but you would really be pushing the developer to get to 45 and based on current construction. So we've got some developers that are going well below that. But, and those are the ones that are working really hard to sort of market themselves as being, you know, going after that green market niche. And so we thought that 45 would be a push, but it would sort of bring everybody up to a better, or I guess push them down in terms of energy consumption. But even though there are some individual developers that are already well below that or hitting well below that threshold. So that's where we came up with a 45.
It said that you can do 45 without doing P-Bing. So some sites don't work well.
That's right. So we kept, we re, we kept the green, the U.S. LEED, pre-building LEED standard in there, but inserted the gold because that way it's not just necessarily about energy, but there would be some other, so if you wanted to choose that, then that might be a way to get sort of more improvements for those people who felt like they wanted to go down that path, but they wouldn't, they'd have other options. So based on what you all said, you felt like originally the LEED standard would really, was a non-starter for most people. I mean, people would just end up with a choice. So hopefully, this makes sense for you guys. I know you probably want to talk about it a little bit, but...
When we talked about this last time, was specific to LEED? Was it LEED Gold or is it LEED Baseline Certification?
It was just certification, yeah.
Carolyn, India's favorite development?
Yes. For new development.
There's one type, I just want to make sure we don't forget about it. The, the not dominated by parking?
What?
Right, I think the standard is that it has to be dominated by parking.
Oh, it's the first page. Yeah, I saw that, yeah, yeah.
So Carolyn, back to the LEED certification. What was the thought process going from baseline certification up to gold and jumping past silver stuff?
Because it's probably a little bit more strenuous than 45, than the HERS 45, and that, but it gives you, there are other means to get there instead of just energy. And I think that we felt like there's, it's going to be pretty easy for some people to be 45. So we don't want to also lower the, it was just another way of providing an option that might be, have a little bit more stringent standard but not be totally possible.
Right. So was, like for, if you just do LEED certified, it'd be like easier, I don't know.
Yeah. You eliminated E. Which was 50% or more of the units no larger than 1,200 square foot.
Oh, no, that should still be there.
Yeah, it's D.
It's D this time around.
Well, I'm an edict.
Right, there were two LEED bullets. So we got rid of one and replaced it with, we got rid of both of them and put one back as LEED Gold and the other one as the HERS rating.
And then had zero.
Oh, we got rid of the net zero, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I think the changes are really good. I think they're, these changes are going to better meet the goal, which is energy efficiency. The HERS rating, I would just say, just for semantics, a HERS rating of 45 or less, just so they're not hitting.
Right.
Only that they hit exactly 45.
It's okay if they're, it's okay to go in a little lower.
Yeah, I think that the gold, instead of simply certified, will cause a project to consider more things other than energy, or there'll have to be a combination of energy versus, you know, access to public transportation, community connectivity, that type of thing. So I think, I was pleased to see the 45. I think that's a change.
So you spoke to the building department. Have you spoken with any feedback from developers or builders regarding this or no?
No. And so, you know, as I said, the building commissioner looked back at the permits that he's reviewed for single-family homes. And I don't know if I have my notes here, but the, the, there were just a few that were 20 or below, and they were all Jonathan Wright projects. And then I think the average was just around 50. So we kind of looked at that and said, well, how could we, you know, push it?
No, I think it's an improvement over where we were last time around. I'm fine with it.
I have, I have some serious reservations about a number of these provisions. I'm conscious of the fact that this is my very first meeting, and I probably don't know what I'm talking about. And the group has been discussing it a number of times, so feel free to ignore whatever I say. But I want to quickly go over some things that strike me. Well, I guess based, I'll keep myself to just two, although I have other things that bother me. Number three, all projects shall include a park or civic space that serves as a focal point of the project. I question the wisdom of that provision. Seems to me there could be a development in a neighborhood that's very desirable, that provides additional housing. Who knows, maybe it'll be 100% affordable, so it'll be urgently needed in the community. But it's just not possible to have a park or civic space that's a focal point of the project. I think it's both very demanding and impossibly vague, which is a bad combination. And I, you know, I understand, obviously, it'd be nice if there were a park or civic space in front of everyone's house, but it would be more than likely to kill any number of developments that would otherwise be desirable. The other thing that concerns me on a different subject is number eight, the four A, B, C, D provisions that have, one or more have to be met. I, it'd certainly be very desirable if every living unit in the city and in the world were energy efficient. You know, the wisdom of that is obvious. But I don't see it as an appropriate subject for zoning. It seems to me that if a developer can sell or rent a unit more quickly, and that's what the market demands, that's what they'll build. And I don't see mixing in affordability or size of units as two of the criteria with energy efficiency. Seems to me apples and oranges or something. It doesn't seem appropriate to impose that through zoning upon developers. So those are just a couple of my concerns. I think there are other issues. The term streetscape, I personally don't know what that means, and I don't think it's a defined term in the ordinance. It raises questions of vagueness that could be interpreted in many different ways. So anyway, you know, as I say, it's the end of the process, and it's my first meeting, so I'd ignore it.
Well, I think just to sort of, the way we came up on the, these are, again, special permit criteria. When an applicant is applying for development within the urban, pre-existing urban neighborhoods for more than seven units. So there was a concern throughout this process that the larger-scale projects have a greater impact in existing neighborhoods than the ones that might add one, two, or three units. So there was a line drawn that said, you know, big units and below is site plan approval. Everything above that, seven or more, is special permit. So then there was a lot of discussion about what are the characteristics, what is important and what makes larger projects, what might be some of those issues that would create impacts on a larger project or on a neighborhood from larger projects. So there was a lot of discussion about wanting to make sure as, you know, if we do start seeing new development in neighborhoods that, you know, address the civic space first is that the concern was that the neighborhood could potentially be changed with one project, or at least maybe a lot could be changed with one project. And that, and that for, you know, good or bad or what have you, that that change potentially also means the loss of open space or areas that were not previously developed for sure. And adding, which doesn't need to be a park, it can be just a park in the sense of a large land mass dedicated for, you know, ball fields or something like that. But park is, could be any size. And so the idea was some civic space, meaning some space that is for that project creates some kind of relief in the landscape on the parcel. And from conversations with, in public meetings, there was a concern that we not give up all of those little bits and pieces as we potentially fill in the neighborhoods. And so I think that, and purposefully, you all talked about not wanting to define a space, a square footage size, or the types of things that that would include. So it's really up to the applicant to say, here I'm proposing this project for the eight units, and here's how I'm going to design my site, and I've really thought about what makes sense here. And it could just be, you know, a five-square-foot little area that they've done something differently that just creates some excitement. Yeah. And in terms of the pick list, we heard a lot of comments from people with, again, about concerns of ensuring that, you know, we're not pricing people out of the market, that we do have opportunities to have affordable housing, or at least options of scale of housing, size of housing, massing. And certainly, energy efficiency was really important to people. And again, because it's a special permit and it's for projects of a certain size, and it doesn't mean every little new infill project, but it really is sort of those bigger projects. And these relate to all the things that are in the sustainability plan about goals and objectives to meet those that are identified as sustainability plans. So we feel like because it's a special permit, you can further show that you're meeting goals and objectives in the sustainability plan through meeting one of these things.
Yeah, I think ultimately, we're talking about such a specific type of belt, large-scale belt in URB or C. And about was if that, if we're going to let that happen, it's going to be by special permit. And with the special permit, it's going to be, it's going to happen, it's going to be done correctly. It's going to be done along sustainable guidelines. Don't lose sight of green space and civic areas and so forth. So I'm fine with the way that the wording's ended up.
The last section, I know this isn't the complete language, but I want to make sure that when we are suggesting that we'll do review and approval, that we will have, this sort of says that you need to show building envelope and location, so we'll get square footage. I mean, it sounds, it doesn't sound like we're asking them much in order to come up with review and approval. So I'm looking for...
So number nine, it should be clear, and if it's not, we must change the language, that if, so always as part of special permit, you're required to file a site plan. And our ordinance specifically says that you can't get a special permit until a site plan's been approved. So it's sort of flipped the other way, which means that with special permit, there's much less certainty on the part of the applicant that they're going to be able to get to do what they want to do. So instead of on the front end expending all this cost for engineering plans about how you're going to lay out everything, get a first read on the special permit before spending all that money. So this point is really saying, you can do that. You can come forward and say, okay, planning board, does this make sense? But in order to do that, you're going to have to see some baseline site plan.
Right. No, I understand my intent is to not have a developer waste money when they have no assurance at all that it's going to be through. I'm just wanting to make sure that we have square footage and lot size so that we can actually determine permeability and coverage. So square footage is all I'm really looking for. So when we're saying building envelope and location, I'm just wanting you to nod and say, yes, they'll give you the square footage.
Well, I don't know that it was intended to. I think it's really more about blocks, concept blocks. So permeability, you have a standard for open space, so you have a minimum requirement. So no matter what, you guys can't waive that minimum open space. And then that relates to the stormwater. They will always need to file, if it's more than an acre, they will need to file a separate stormwater plan that shows the amount of impervious area versus pervious. And that is a, that's a fully engineered plan. So I think you might, in some instances, get square footage of buildings, but I don't know if you'd get to the level of detailed permeability versus not because you might not have a building, you know, streets or driveways and all that. So are you saying building envelopes, you want to know precisely the square foot of the building footprint?
Well, in other cases, like on H, C, we're actually, no, D, we're saying 1,200 square foot, you know, I mean, in other words, are they going to be at a point in their design where they can tell us the square footage of the buildings? If I define a building envelope, I would think you could. I'm just looking for...
I would think no, though. I would think, no, obviously, if that's the way from the pick list they're getting credit, they have to tell you in one 1,200 square feet. But for anybody else, I mean, I think about, you know, we keep using different tests to test this concept. So I think about Lyman Estate, where we really want to know is, where's the road going to be, where the lots going to be? So typically, a building envelope is the opposite. So typically, a building envelope is the opposite. It's the biggest someone might do, and then it gives the developer lots of opportunity to work with buyers, frankly, in laying out where it is. So a developer might not know what a buyer is looking for.
Well, let's...
I'd say the important thing, Lyman Estate's a good example, is where's the front facade? You know, how close to the street with the buildings be? Where would the, this, the road be? But maybe not how deep into a property of the building.
So if I can just add to that, the other piece of it is sort of the last sentence is, so unless they come forward with a special permit, they say, we want to do a special permit. Here generally are road alignments and structures. And in order to get that, we, we're going to do 50% of the, or we're going to do, sorry, 50% of the 1,200 square foot, you know. So then you're approving a special permit based on their pledge that they're going to do that. So then that last sentence is if, that would be, that to me would be a special permit threshold change. So if they then came back under the full site plan for your approval, because they would still need to come back for a fully engineered site plan, if they decided that they weren't going to do 1,200 square foot units, and they wanted to do maybe something else in there, you could decide whether that really triggered an amendment to the special permit or not. Or maybe even during the review of the initial special permit, you could say, we're okay if you decide to change, you know, and pick one of the other things instead. That would obviously give someone a little bit more flexibility.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not, what is in the back of my mind is sort of the Hostel Hill, where we had an idea about what a community was going to look like, and then as it got piecemeal built, it didn't do that. I don't know that this is the same story here, but that's what made it...
Really, just by that last line, Carolyn, talking about how important is, you'd have to think as a board, here's the things we're okay as developers' flexibility, and here are the character finding features we're approving this because we believe this to be true.
Yeah.
And if you're going to change that, then you'd have to come back.
Right. So what do you need from us tonight, Carolyn, with respect to...
A vote on whether you're ready for this to be submitted to city council. So then, once that happens, it would get referred out for a joint public hearing with city council ordinance committee and planning board. And we've tentatively scheduled April 14th as that joint public hearing. So, but it would need to go into council packet. So I need a vote to say you guys are ready to move it forward as a formal ordinance.
Are we taking public input on this right now?
It's up to you. You can, if you want to do that. It's not, you know, it's not the public hearing, it's the...
Is anyone here that wishes to speak regarding this item? No, okay. Any questions from the board? Somebody want to make a motion?
Just, for the new people, obviously, your vote on this doesn't determine your vote. You can all change your mind later after your vote against it.
You're just voting on putting it forward to city council as an ordinance.
Can we abstain from voting? Because I just don't feel prepared to vote on this.
So this is only a vote to submit it to the council?
Right, to move it forward. And it'll come back, we have a joint hearing on the 14th?
April 14th.
14th. So it'll come back and we'll get to see it again.
And just, you know, the legal matter, we can't make changes that would make the legal ad. We can't expand the scope. So, because then you couldn't suddenly add 12 new conditions. It would be more restrictive, because people wouldn't know that for the public hearing, but you could take away conditions. So if you want to argue, for example, that's often one of the things, that the board could vote to do later, but if you suddenly wanted to add new conditions, then you couldn't without us re-advertising.
I agree. Except for revised, which will come down, which will include 7 and URB and C as reflected in section 350G of the code. And forward the P and L, I think.
Second, second, all favor? Okay, one down. Do you want to keep going here?
It's been years in the making.
Or do you want to jump out and then...
All right, well, it's up to you. I mean, we can come back to the other one.
Yeah, why don't you guys, since all these fine folks showed up for it? I believe what's coming up next. Okay, next up, we have scheduled for 7:30, a special permit for kennel and dog daycare at 221 Haynesville Road, leads map ID 6-44. Just some preliminary words for those of you who are new tonight. We have two types of hearings generally that we speak to. One is a site plan approval, which is generally technical in nature. It's, does the, does this plan that's being presented meet the regulations or not? And there's not a lot of gray here. It's more black and white. Special permit is kind of step back big picture. And does this project that's being presented, is it right, is it the right use for this space? It's kind of, it's a broader take, broader discussion. So there's going to be a presentation. The board will ask questions of the presenter. Then we'll go to public comment. At public comment, anybody who wants to say anything in regards to this matter, just raise your hand. Come to the podium, state just your name and address. Address questions to the board, not to the applicant. Any questions at the end of the given tape that are still kind of hanging out there, we'll go back to the applicant, try to clean everything up before the end of the night. But it's a, it's a process, so we can kind of control it, not a conversation that we're going to lose control of. So with that being said, is there somebody making a presentation?
No.
Carolyn?
Just, Jack, one thing. John Lex has officially stepped off the position of the planning board because of being a better to this project.
On that note, my... Hi, my name is Rachel Dossel, and I am one of the partners of Sam's Dog House. Let me introduce my business partners, Andrea, Chief Financial Officer, also my mother, Bob, my dad, general contracting and such, and my wife Jenna, as our partner. So what Sam's Dog House is about is encouraging good relationships between people and their dogs. In the Northampton area, there is a lack of daycares that provide such services. Generally, in Western Massachusetts, the daycare services that are provided are less than designated. And my goal is to not only have a daycare training and boarding facility, but also a community center for people and their dogs to come to if they have any behavioral issues, if they have a relationship with the dogs, if they just, you know, need to get rid of their dog for a day because they're having the flooring done or something like that. But my goal is to establish trust in the community, because people view their dogs as their children. That being said, like I said, my mission, our mission statement is to encourage good relationship between dogs and their people, and we provide this in a positive reinforcement atmosphere. Like I said, the services that we provide are boarding, training, and daycare. And all these services are based on positive reinforcement only. There's no adverse techniques used. Our staff, my staff, have been working for me for at least a year now, so I have personally trained myself in the business for 10 years. And I've been training people and their dogs as well as working in a daycare environment for those 10 years. So this being said, you know, I've seen what to do, what not to do. And one of the main concerns with daycare is behavior management. How are we going to control barking, dog bark? It echoes, and that is, is a nuisance to neighbors. And that is definitely something that I want to address. Research has shown that barking is caused by stress and over-arousal levels. The daycare services that I will provide is geared towards keeping low arousal levels, keeping visual stimulation, meaning, you know, instead of just chain link gates, having upstart cave fences, so that way the dogs can't see other things, so they're not barking or reacting at things. Our staff are proactive in their management with dogs, meaning they use obedience before the dog actually has a chance to react. Barking, any barking is dealt with immediately, efficiently, and humanely. We use a variety of different techniques, such as generally hears, create timeouts, and general potty blocking, which is just invading the dog's face to let him know that it's not the behavior I was looking for. Actually, when I went around the neighborhood, a lot of the residents were thrilled to hear that they're going to be barking because of, there's apparently a bear problem in the neighborhood. Unfortunately, I ended up on having a no-bark zone, but I can assure you the smell of bear, or the smell of dogs will probably deter the bears from coming around the area. The next piece is waste removal. We intend having something called a doggy community system. And what this works as is it's essentially a septic system for dog waste. There's several different models available on a residential scale, but the one that we're going to be building is on an industrial scale. So that way, it will, you know, handle the amount of food everybody's going to be putting in there. So that will leach essentially into our leach fields. All the clean products, disinfecting products, we're going to be using all natural, because we can have a septic system. We're going to be using Malaluka as one of our main suppliers for clean products and such. At this time too, I did go around the neighborhood and talk to as many people as I could possibly get hold of, and I did give a petition in support of, I did, of daycare occupying this location.
I'd like to clarify.
There was some challenge with this, which I completely understand. And there's two other parts I wanted to cover. We are going to allow public access on the northern side of our lot to the conservation areas. We're going to maintain that. There's, we're not going to, you know, set aside these, it's just going to be public access. We're going to set up our own waste, doggy pickup paddies and garbage cans, so that way owners can be responsible, take it back to the dogs. Lastly, there was, the original site plan included a second driveway, which did not meet the zoning requirements of curb, I forget, I can't get it set up.
Corret.
But our second driveway is actually pivotal to the safety of our dogs. One of the services that we hope to offer in the very near future is a shuttle bus. So that way, you know, it would be a scrap congregation, and it's also for ease of owners, convenience. But that second driveway would not be used by staff. It would not be used by customers. It would be used solely for shuttle purposes. We would install a gate system, so that way it wouldn't be accessible. And we would put up a temporary curb, I don't know if you, like parking blocks or some sort of curving to deter any kind of parking in that area. But like I said before, the shuttle bus pulls in, the closed gates behind it. That way, there's no, any chance of a dog escaping and running out on Route 9. And lastly, I will hand off mitigation, track mitigation and such, to Bob, my father. He has done a little bit of research as far as client demographics and travel patterns and such. But I'll answer questions before I sit down.
Any questions just yet? Nope, guess we're done.
I have a question. What's the size of the building?
The size, the top floor is 2,400 square feet and a dozen of basements.
So you're using the basement? That's why the floor plans that show that's part of, so does that make your usable space 4,800?
Well, I don't exactly know the technical classifications with residential, but when I was buying a house, there was, any house that I looked at, none of the basement square footage was ever mentioned. So I kind of assumed that basement square footage is not actually counted in livable space square footage.
Just, I use a doggy daycare service, and I know when I brought my dog, so my dogs aren't barkers, but that drop-off and pickup time, like you said, it causes that arousal or whatever. And dogs bark excessively, every pickup and every drop-off. And, you know, my dogs don't bark. They're not barkers, but they're in that chorus from that.
A lot of that is a daycare specifically, meaning that they have learns. You know, they're so excited to get in there that they're just barking, and they're getting rewarded by it by proceeding forward into the building. Now, what's going to set me apart from other daycares is, okay, we have this problem. Your dogs only bark here. We want to resolve this. These are ways that we can help you. Now, my program is structured so that when dogs enter, they get the potty break, and then they get downtime, which lowers the arousal level. And they're not just stuck in a crate and unsupervised. There's a staff member there actually practicing quiet, practicing, you know, calm behaviors and basic obedience sounds, it's that sort of thing. At the end of the day, there's actually a routine that we're going to follow, so that way, you know, the dogs have their last potty break, and then they go down to the settle-down. And a staff member will once again practice crate training, practice basic obedience, so that way, when your dog comes out, they're calm. Staff are not just going to get dragged out the door by the dogs. Dogs have to sit and walk politely in order to sit. So there's going to be rules. And dogs do best with rules. And if they're consistent with them, then they know what to expect. So if they know that they come in barking, you know, the first thing I'm going to say is timeout, cancel later. And then they're going to know that there is a negative repercussion to them coming in barking. So they're going to come in still happy to come and play, but they're going to know that the rule is no barking. They can have fun, but no barking. And consistency is a key to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And also, since we're still talking about barking, I did want to point out that our boarding suites are individualized rooms. And this, with research, has, especially in shelter environments, enclosed rooms, smaller areas, provide less visual stimulation, which in turn provides, or lowers arousal levels, and thus creates a lower arousal environment, that's less barky dogs. But the enclosed boarding areas too, because they are more room-like, it'll help keep the stress levels down, that's keeping the barking down.
So you have plans for up to 40 dogs, is that right?
Forty-five daycare dogs is our absolute capacity. And this is keeping in mind with a capacity of 15, 40 dogs. I don't believe at any time we will exceed those. I am very strict about staff-dog ratios. I'm not all about bringing as many dogs in as possible to make money. My goal is for dogs to come in and learn better behaviors than what they came in with.
Did I understand you to say that each dog will have its own enclosed compartment?
No, for boarding purposes. Now, during daycare, our daycare operation always runs between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And they have nighttime between 12 and 13, because they're like children, and they need to be in the nap, at 8:30. So it's, owners will drop off mainly between 7:00 and 8:00, and pick up mainly between 5:30 and 6:30. We will have late pickup hours as well.
Good? Okay, thank you.
Come on, Bob. This is my first meeting too. I was going to address the traffic. I have an agenda sheet to the thing that we, you all, if you want to look at them.
I've got it.
This is, oh, you have one?
Yep, we have one.
Oh, you have one too?
Everybody's got one?
What this is, if you look at the first page, it's the populations of the areas we're in, the numbers of households, and then you start reducing that number by the number of people who have dogs. You know, the national average would be 36%. Most people have one and a half dogs. I don't know how they do that, but... And then you look at financial markets that we're expecting to draw people in from because, face it, a dog daycare is a luxury. Then you subtract people with children for many reasons. A lot of families with children have a stay-home parent, or kids get home from school early, or for whatever the reason. Then you get your potential customers, and out of them, the realistic value is for us to expect maybe 3% to 5% of them to be customers. Because if you look at the next page, you see these circles. Those circles are two-and-a-half-mile radius around business. All the other circles are other reputable dog daycares in the area. All the other circles are other reputable dog daycares in the area. Not to mention dozens of pet sitters, pet walkers, there's all kinds of people out there doing this. So it's unrealistic for us to expect customers to come from beyond that area. Statistically, people will not drive more than two and a half miles out of their way. Which, if you go back to the first page and you look at the numbers, the people out of Leeds, we expect just over seven customers out of Leeds, 10 customers out of Haydenville, and we'd like to get 25 people out of Florence. The problem is, most of Florence that's in our target area is outside our two and a half miles. So we've got to go get these dogs. And that's where the shuttle bus comes in. That's why the second driveway is so important to us, to keep that. It has to be fenced in when you pull the bus in, because like Rachel said, this is all about safety of the dogs. You start letting dogs run out of the school bus, they have to be contained. Also, if you look at the numbers, that comes to about 42 dogs. The first 17 out of Leeds and Haydenville, we expect they're pacified. If we go get 12 dogs on the bus out of Florence, we're looking at 12 to 15 cars coming out of Florence to come into our business. As opposed to the 25 cars that we were talking about earlier, as far as the numbers for So that's all I've got on that, is hopefully to make a difference.
Will there be an additional charge for the pickup and drop off?
We'll say thank you very much. Actually, I think, were we, Rachel?
For memberships, they're free, and depending on if it's an independent pickup, there will be a charge, but if it's an actual shuttle where we are picking up six dogs, then there will be no charge.
There'll be one central pickup area. If somebody wants us to drive to Illinois to pick up their dog, you bet we're going to charge them.
What about the center of Florence?
No, no, the center of Florence is, that's going to be right on our roof.
So there'll be no charge, so nobody would have any reason to drive their dog out themselves then, if you'll pick it up for free?
The only reason, I don't know if I can get a bus big enough for 25 dogs. I, we don't want a school bus, we're looking for the shorter version. I don't think that, because you can't just put them on a bus, there has to be a crate. Each dog has to have an individual crate on that bus. You can't have them intermanaging, having flights, hurting each other. I really don't know if you can get too many more than 12 crates on a bus. You might be able to have a couple up higher for small dogs, but if I could get 12 on a bus, I'd be happy with that. If things start going like we're planning, we'll get two buses.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Discussion by the board?
Oh, sorry.
Nope, Monica.
The final is we could slate Carolyn and our lawyer in Northampton. I'm going to try to combine my comments to grappling with this pigeonholing system that we have with regard to the question of mitigation. So initially, Carolyn, and obviously you folks know the way mitigation's going, brand new to me, but the problem we have is there is no doggy daycare that falls within, or falls within a particular definition in the ordinance. And so the task is to find one which is the closest match. Initially, the thought was that the closest linguistic match is retail and personal services. And I am here to suggest to you very strongly that that is a very poor match indeed, in terms of the purpose of the ordinance. So if you look at the definition of retail and personal services, it's about grocery stores, retail stores, shops, and the only thing related to animals has to do with grooming and sale of pet supplies, such as Dave's Pet Food City and the like. So it is contemplated by that is a pattern of continuing in-and-out kind of use of the property. I would suggest that the closest match, and it's very close, is human daycare, because you're, you are performing the exact same service, except you're performing it for an animal versus a human being, a child. And the patterns of usage are virtually identical, and their purpose is virtually identical. You've got a dog at home and both folks work, you can't leave the dog at home, it's not good for the dog, it's probably not good for your house, and so you need to put them in an environment, hopefully that is fun and constructive and good. And so you drop them off on your way to work, and you pick them up after you go to work, exactly as you would in a childcare setting. The one distinction, which I think is important in terms of the figure if you ever get to the question of mitigation, was pointed out to me by my daughter when I was explaining this to her this afternoon. My daughter lives in Chicago, and she's out, because there was a deaf and, of her very close friend, and she said to me, the use isn't the same. Because child daycare is five days a week, typically, Monday through Friday, following the pattern of the parents' work. And Rachel would confirm that the pattern is very different for dog owners who use the service. And typically, they go Tuesday and Thursday, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. So in terms of the goal of the mitigation statute, which as I understand it, is to somehow measure the burden of increased traffic on the property in question, it would be, in my judgment, less than, how much less, who knows, but less than child daycare. But the patterns are nonetheless very similar. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that this is, if it flies with you folks, a very young business, going to be run by a young individual, and they're taking on a big nut. When they signed up with the seller of the property, Girl Scouts of America, and agreed to a purchase price, they had no idea whatsoever that they would be confronted with mitigation costs which could represent 30% of the purchase price. And I understand it's your job, if you get that car, to do what is fair with regard to mitigation costs, but I would ask that that be phased in over a period of time, perhaps three years, which I think it would be fair to assume would be consistent with the gradual increase in use on the property as a new business develops. It's not going to be the same on day one as it is on, after three to four years. And the final thing I wanted to touch on is the issue of this driveway. I don't know if you have a picture, or if you've seen the property. Okay, so there's a horseshoe, presently there's a horseshoe driveway, and there are two entrances. So you can literally go in on the right-hand side if you're coming up from, what is that, that driving range and heading towards Williamsburg. You could go in the first entrance, and you could literally drive all the way around and come out the second entrance. And the concern from the city, which is completely understandable, is that that's dangerous to have a busier use of that with multiple exits within a very short period of time. Totally understand that. We think we have a solution to present to you that would be something short of simply eliminating by way of creating a permanent curb in front of one, in front of the first entrance to the right. And so that is what Bob had spoken about earlier. What we propose to do is to eliminate the driveway in terms of any use of it towards the back. So all of that is going to be fenced in. But what we would like to do in its place is to erect a gate which would be limited to use solely for the shuttle service, which would enable a bus to pull in, the gate would be unlocked, and then the bus would drive in, and the dogs could be safely gotten into the facility. And that would be the sole use that we propose. Otherwise, it would be shut off for any other use by employees, excuse me, employees or customers of the facility. That also speaks to the issue of mitigation in terms of actual use by cars. So the greater the use that we can have by a single bus carrying 10 dogs, eight dogs, whatever, that means you have, instead of eight cars coming in, you have one bus, which lessens the impact on the road even further. And I think that too could be considered in terms of the dollar amount of mitigation, again, if you get that car.
So just to clarify, that first entrance would be used exclusively for the shuttle?
Exactly.
The second entrance then would be used for the public?
Yes, and for employees.
And for employees. So if you have five cars dropping off, how do they get in and out of that second entrance? What's the pattern?
There's a parking lot in the back, and they drive in, and they would exit the same driveway.
Horse around, come back out.
Yeah.
So the shuttle will not go around?
No. I don't know if I have liberty to approach the, can I just draw a quick picture?
Sure. Show them that.
Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, I watched, I watched. So, over here.
We have the plan.
Oh, okay. All right. So roughly speaking, you have, you've got, you've got Route 9 here, then you've got the first entrance here, and that's the one we're talking about, and then you've got, like, a second entrance which would be the only entrance. And currently, what you have is a driveway that runs all the way around like this. That's not very good. All the way around like that. So what's going to, what we would propose to do is to install, I got this messed up, but the gate would be like here, it would be locked and limited to the shuttle service, there would be signs indicating that. It would be opened, the shuttle bus would park, it would then be completely enclosed. All of this is going to be gone.
So the reason I asked is because how does that bus turn around? It's not backing out on the Route 9.
Oh, that's...
No, there's plenty of space to turn around.
There's plenty of, okay. So...
I'll be driving it.
Good point.
You're going to have to plan on how to do that.
Yeah. So the plan would be for this to turn around and go out that way, not back on. And that's doable, yes or no?
No, I asked you today, I don't know how you're going to do that.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry, barking dogs for too many years. What was the question?
If you're using the downhill entrance for the shuttle bus, I need you to explain to me how you're going to turn that around in that area.
I believe it is a 15-foot driveway?
Right now, it's a 15-foot driveway, but in the process of eliminating all of that drive-around, hard driveway, I mean, you've got all the plans there in front of you, we've got a ton of work for excavators, and we will make sure that we have enough room inside that fenced area to make a K-turn with that bus. If, no, we won't have it backing out on Route 9.
Where, where's the lot line over there between where the house, how far from the house is the lot line?
Is it the neighbors on the side?
No, just the lot line, because you can, you can add to the lot line on the side if there's enough space there.
Well, if there's...
Oh, there's plenty of space.
If there's plenty of space there, it's probably, yeah, especially on that side.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions before we open up the public?
I'm not sure how many staff people would be coming along. How many staff people would be driving in and out daily?
There would be a minimum of three staff on duty, and that's assuming an average of five to 10 dogs a day. We would have no more than five staff on premises at any time. There would be somebody there 24 hours a night, because we are offering 24-hour supervision, so there would be at least one staff there at all times.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to open up to comments by the public. If you could raise your hand, I'll call them, just come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and...
221 Haydenvale Road. I am the closest butter to the proposed panel. I sent, I brought a letter to Mr. Fiden on Tuesday, and everybody on the planning board would receive it. So I think everybody has had a chance to read it, and basically that outlined everything that I was concerned about. We were talking just now about the driveway. The driveway as it exists now is really a one-way driveway, it's not a two-way thing, and I don't expect that two cars can pass each other, going, one going in and one going out. It's hard for me to visualize, I've lived next door to the Girl Scout building for over 20 years, it's hard for me to visualize how a bus is going to get in there and make a turn if they're not going to just go all the way around and out the other side. There is a parking area there, but the excavation and so forth, all of that kind of escapes me right now, I can't visualize it, what it is. I guess what I'd like to do is to kind of reiterate some of the things that I've said that I think are pretty applicable. One is the distance of my place from my building to their building. Couple of days ago, I went out with a yardstick, I literally measured yardstick by yardstick from my building to the Girl Scout building, and that is 20 yards. That includes, of course, my driveway and their driveway. And then I measured from the side of my driveway to the side of their driveway, which is only a distance of 10 yards. And that is... And that is actually crossing the lot line. So that the lot line is even less than ten yards from my driveway. All of which is saying, I'm awfully close. And maybe, you know, that's why I wrote this letter. I am the one who is most concerned. I did speak to a number of other neighbors. And they were concerned, but they were not able to be here tonight. The first thing I did when I heard about this, Rachel came and talked to me, and I was very interested in her idea. I think it's, you know, a wonderful entrepreneurial idea. The big problem I have with it is not in the right place. I went to the building inspector's office and found that this is zone suburban residential. And I sort of breathed a sigh of relief at that because I counted on that to be the case. And then, of course, I got the letter from, or the listing of tonight's hearings. And I find that there is a special permit being requested, which would overturn the suburban residential status. It is suburban residential. Everybody around there is in residence. And most people have been there for quite a few years. Some are not as close, some are across the highway, and perhaps don't feel as strongly about it as I do. The case that Rachel makes for working with the dogs so that you're going to have this quiet, calm, controlled environment, I think it looks fine on paper, but I don't buy it. I have owned dogs almost all of my life. I know how excitable they are. Barking is the way they communicate with each other, whether they're happy or unhappy or whatever. This is what they do. I cannot envision all of these animals coming in every day, whether they're coming in on a bus or coming to be individually dropped off. I cannot imagine that this is going to be a quiet environment. Twice a day, there's gonna be a lot of noise. There's going to be training taking place, and dogs get excited as well during that. Working with dogs individually, this idea of positive reinforcement is good. I do it with my dog too. But when you're walking into a room and it has, you know, fourteen dogs in it, which I did last week because I had my dog in a kennel somewhere for a couple of days, walking in, you know, in two minutes, every one of them was barking. The first one starts, the second one picks it up. And in the ensuing minutes, every one of them was barking their heads off. And I could not hear the man talking to me, showing me where my dog would be. They were all in individual spaces, individual cages. So they weren't at each other, but they were just barking out of pure excitement. I took my dog in for her annual physical yesterday, and I talked to the vet. I simply said, there is a proposal to have a kennel, a dog kennel, next to my house. And I'm a little worried about the quiet. And she said, that's the end of quiet. And she laughed. And that's all we said about it. The other thing that the neighbors and I have talked about is the traffic. The traffic on Route 9 is amazing. And I've mentioned that in the letter. And when I say cars and trucks of all kinds are barreling up and down at forty-five and fifty miles an hour, I'm not overstating it. I'm not really worried that the dog's safety because of what they have said about the fences and so forth, although there's always the possibility. But I am concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about the noise from the dogs. And I'm concerned about the noise from the traffic all the time. I have a breezeway, and summertime, I cannot sit in the breezeway quietly and enjoy reading a book because the traffic is tremendous, almost all day long. The other matter that I mentioned in my letter is the building that is going on at Lyndon Manor. A three-story, large three-story building connected to Lyndon Manor. And that is going to add to the traffic. We anticipate that it's going to add. You know, a lot of this, we don't know for a fact, but we can anticipate from past experience. In the twenty years that I've been there, the traffic on Route 9 has increased unbelievably. It's going to increase with that building, when that building opens, with the professional staff coming in, going, and regular staff, and visitors, and so forth. That's going to increase. And so I see myself living next door to a place where traffic is coming in. A lot of dogs will be dropped in by car individually. If I'm coming from the Hill towns or if I'm coming up from Florence, and it's not too long a distance, why would I not drop off the dog myself rather than take to have it come? The other matter was that of doing the community a favor somehow by allowing them to use your property to go into the conservation lands in the back. Conservation lands of but my property, closer actually than it does next door. But it unnerves me a little bit to have the idea that there are a lot of strangers walking around in the woods behind my house. I can see them, especially in a time when the weeds are falling and there are lots of people wanting to drive in. There is an access farther down, opposite the driving range. There is a roadway in there. People could go in there and, you know, wander around in there without coming so close to those of us who are living there. There are no fences. We just have the open woods behind our homes. So that idea was also alarming to me. The other thing that I mentioned in my letter was this matter of dogs running loose in the woods because I've seen this now three times. And in fact, I mentioned it to Rachel when she came to my house, that someone whom I did not know had come to that parking lot and had something like a half dozen dogs with him. I believe it was a man. And they were unleashed. And they came racing toward my dog, who was in a pending area in the back. I was out there with them. They came racing toward the dog. And I was alarmed because I didn't see the person. I thought it was a wild dog pack. They were very excited to see my dog, my dog's out all excited. And then this man called them. They came back, and off they all went, unleashed into the woods. So this happened three times. I was pretty concerned. I'm not the only one who saw it. Another one, the neighbors that they saw. So in the end, these are all the things that I worry about. But I also, very frankly, worry about the value of my home. I am going to be considering selling sometime within this next decade. As I get older and less capable to take care of the property, I will probably want to sell it. And I would be rather upset if ten or twenty thousand dollars were chopped off the price because someone said, it's next to Sam's dog house. I'm not sure how many people here would actually entertain the idea of buying a house to a kennel. So in the end, I want to say, I think, you know, Rachel has a different idea. I think you're handling to use something like that. I only think it should be somewhere in a more rural area or an area where you don't have people living close by. That's my case.
Thank you. Can I help and ask Rachel a question, just clarify for a second? Let's get all the comments from everybody, then we kind of vote them up, and then have Rachel respond at the end, maybe, best.
Suzanne Smiley. And I live in Gill, Massachusetts, but I represent the Girl Scouts. We own the building. We own the building since nineteen sixty-five, built it for the Girl Scouts. We had, at that time, they were able to issue a use variance. So we were there by a use variance, which you can't do anymore on a conventional variance. But the zoning now, by special permit, does allow a kennel in residential agricultural areas. The reason I wanted to talk a little bit is because I wanted, I think people think of the Girl Scouts as a very low-impact use. And I don't think they are a low-impact use there. The conservation land, first of all, that was, that we're talking about, the Girl Scouts own the two acres that you're talking about now, but also forty acres behind. It goes behind the two abutters and straight back. The town, Wayne Feiden, came to me. And I was the director since nineteen eighty-nine at that location. So Wayne came to me, and he approached us to sell the forty acres behind or a conservation area, which we thought was a great use. We have trails and things there, and they have been open to the public. We have checked with our attorney. We had no limitations on that. We had a little donation box there. We publicized the trails. We have a half-mile loop that was handicapped accessible. So there was a habit of people coming in and out already using this trail. And the town asked us during those land transitions if we would grant a right-of-way so that people from Route 9 could come through. And we denied that because we thought it would be obvious that our parking lot had already existed there. And people are used to using, people would keep using that parking lot. So we didn't want to set up a right-of-way for the next owner. They would just assume that they would be able to get through to the conservation area. But it has been used, and we did work with the town to do that. The traffic patterns, we had, when we were there, we had fifteen to seventeen staff members in that building. We were using the both floors, the basement and the top, for office space throughout. Those, the kinds of jobs we had aren't the kind where you come, park your car, stick, in and out, in and out. Recruiting volunteers, training volunteers, going to meetings, coming in and out at night. We had board meetings there on evenings, weekday evenings. So we'd be there, usually about twenty people, twenty separate cars, there from, you know, board meetings, I can't remember, six-thirty to nine. We'd be there till nine-thirty cleaning up. So it's, we generated, I submit to own traffic, but we also had a store there where we sold badges and packages that the girls would earn, uniforms, things like that. So we had people coming in and out all the time. We had trainings that we did, many evening and weekend trainings. We had weekend events. Some of them, we tried not to do this very often. Maybe once a year, we would have a large event where we had cars parking all over the place, and we shuttled them from other locations to the property. Cookies, Girl Scout cookies. The way we deliver Girl Scout cookies is we had troop leaders coming. We had kind of, basement became a warehouse of cookies, cases of cookies. We would have troop leaders coming constantly during probably January through March, so three months, picking up cookies, exchanging cookies, you know, coming in and out all the time. And that driveway, we certainly used. People would come in that bottom part. There is kind of a turnout where they would park, load up their cookies, go around and come out the other way. Problem was, when we had the delivery trucks bring the cookies, they would bring big semi trucks. And they couldn't even negotiate the turn to go around that driveway. So oftentimes, they end up stopping on Route 9, backing up into our driveway. Or if they could make the turn into our driveway, they would back up again on Route 9. So you have semis for years backing in and out on Route 9. I think this is really a less impact than the Girl Scouts have done on the neighborhood. We were the only office for four thousand girl members throughout western Massachusetts. So we had a fair amount of traffic, you know, through the day and into the nights and the weekends as well. And I think that's all I wanted to say, is to give some context of what the use was since nineteen sixty-five until one year ago, more than a year ago. Now, of course, there's no use. I mean, we come probably twice a week. We have people there. We did have cookies there this year, but we brought them instead of the semi. We brought them in a pickup truck. But we still had people coming in and out to pick up cookies. So we used the building, but from what we did, the last year has been a whole different story. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, in the back.
I'm Nancy Matthew Grandall, and I live at eighty Leonard Street, which is just across the street. I won't go over everything my neighbor said, but obviously, I have all of her concerns. I'll just try to add to it so that I can be quick. One of the things is the wildlife. We have tons of wildlife in that area. I have, like, the bears that are in my backyard. They move across the street. One of my concerns is that with the barking dogs, we'll have more movement back across Route 9 and the possibility of more accidents. That's one thing. The activity she spoke, I've lived there for thirteen years. I've never seen that kind of activity at the Girl Scouts. Yeah, I've never seen, I've never seen semi tractor trailer trucks there. I'm sorry, I haven't. I've seen cars parked there for like a meeting. No people, just cars parked there, and then the cars were gone. They did a couple of times a weekend, and that's all I've ever seen in my life. Another thing that concerns me is the driveway that they're going to be using is the closest to the right of the street, which is already kind of a dangerous intersection. It was supposed to be taken care of, and then the money might have the yellow line down the road and the extra lines and stuff like that. But anyway, so that concerns me. And my neighbor had mentioned Lyndon Manor. The thing that concerns me about Lyndon Manor is that with that new facility, you're gonna have a lot of people at difficult times of their life are going to be within earshot of this. And when I went to Lyndon Manor, it's probably outside the zone of who would get notified because nobody had told them about this. And so I went and I brought up one of the letters that Danny Ward had sent so that they would know about it. I'm just trying to skip through so I don't worry. I think probably that, and of course, the issue she had with the house. Obviously, there is a financial issue. I would not buy a house that was next to a town. I would say that it sounds like a great idea. I didn't get a chance to talk to Rachel when she came around the neighborhood, but I did YouTube her, and she seems like she's very confident in her very part of arson. And I wish her well, but just not in that neighborhood. I can't, I think that's wrong. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is John Lutz. I live at 291 Haydenville Road, which is the third house up north of the proposed site. I was just trying to go quickly through some concerns that I have. First of all, primarily is the change of use. I mean, we're talking about going from a business, a commercial entity, nine-to-five, sometimes in the evenings, sometimes on weekends. Have lived there for eleven years and would not have the experience. I've never seen trucks, I've never seen overcrowded parking lot. You know, it's a small commercial entity. To a twenty-four-seven, if I did my math right, somewhere in the neighborhood of hopefully thirty-five or forty dogs a day coming and going. It just seems like a very dramatic change in use from what we've been there. It just seems like a very dramatic change in use from what has been there for many years. The traffic, you know, and pure numbers, of course, we're down to very busy. If you dropped in, you know, a thousand cars, it wouldn't be that big a deal. But the reality is, it's a very dangerous place. I've said many times, the most dangerous thing I do every day is pull out of my driveway. If I can get out of it safely and my dog gets out of it safely, then we've had a good day already. So it's a very congested place, Leonard Street intersection, the two driveways, the hill, the speeds. So, you know, it is a very dangerous place. You know, the noise, lifelong dog owner, have a dog now, you know, thirty-five or forty dogs, you know, I would have to agree. You know, all best intentions, you know, they're dogs, and they're going to be dogs. And, you know, anybody that has one or has ever had one knows that that is going to happen, and they're going to react like dogs. And carrying that, I'm actually worried about, because I think, if I know correctly, I think each of us that is within a couple or three houses of the site all have dogs. So I'm also a little worried about, well, what is the impact on our dogs of forty dogs relatively close? Dogs are very sensitive. They have good hearing. They have good smell, all those things. What's it going to do to the quality of life for our dogs if there's this constant presence of all these other dogs? I know what it's like when I see one other dog with my dog on the bike way and we're walking, you know. They act like dogs and, you know, things like that. So concerned about that as well. And finally, I think it's a very relevant fact about the adverse impact or potential adverse impact on existing property values. Obviously, folks that have purchased there for, in the past years, it wasn't a kennel. I mean, it was a commercial entity, yes, I understand that, but it was an office. Maybe a busy, even if it was a busy office, it was an office. It was nine-to-five. It wasn't on the weekends primarily, all those things. And this would be a really different change. And I don't think, you know, I think any reasonable estimate would be that it would adversely impact people. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Kim Bierwirth. I live at two ninety-seven Hayden Road. I don't think it was a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea. It would increase a lot of activity around that property. I think the zoning of the area at suburban residential is very specific. I think also it does a lot for special permits. At some point in time, you have to draw a line. There's how many special permits would be issued. Because at some point in time, if you issue enough special permits, then it's no longer the intent of the zoning satisfaction. Be aware of that. At some point in time, the line has to be drawn, and enough will be enough. And hope this is not for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep.
This is my first time ever becoming a Girl Scout. I'm Mary McGuire, and I'm with the community of Florence. And I'm also the owner of Century Planet Financial Resources and have been on the board of directors of the Girl Scouts. And when I came, I thought we had a very good plan, and I thought I would just, you know, have a few people that obviously are upset that they're going to have something new next to them or across the street from them or near them. But looking at the Girl Scouts, the zoning is allowed. What you're looking for is the permission to come in there and do it in a way that's going to make everybody happy. And I believe that the dog here is a good use. And it will be managed properly so that the fears that everybody has is not going to be as bad as they think. But it's always, when you don't know something about something, that you fear it. I don't think we need to fear a dog kennel there, not when these people have put so much planning into it. They've put a lot of money behind it, and they're there to help the dogs and help the area. And I believe that we have to kind of settle down and look at this from the aspect of, you know, are we doing something good for the community? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add something?
Anybody else? Has anything? No? Yes?
Okay. I just wanted to add, I mean, these are our homes, and the thing is, is that it's not that it's something new. It's something that if we want to spend some time sitting in our yard, we can. If we want to have our windows open in the summer, it's going to affect this. So I think that it's not so much if it's a new use or anything like that. It's just a change. It's going to change our quality of life, you see. And I, like my neighbor, sometime in the next ten years, I'm probably going to want to retire, maybe sell my home or something like this. And so it just seems to me, what recourse do we have if we go ahead with this plan? And I'm a dog person too. If we go ahead with this plan and we okay it, and there is a problem, as we talked about and we worry about, what recourse do we have at that point to solve that problem? You know, it just doesn't seem to me like there's going to be anything that we can do about it. We just happen to live with it. We lose our quiet. We lose the chance to find a buyer for our homes that we're ready to sell. The effect of the wildlife, the effect of the people who are staying at Linden Manor, that's the thing that worries me. You know, because once it's a done deal, it's a done deal, you know. And I don't want to have to be calling the police, you know, with the noise complaints and stuff like that. I tend to be a let-lit-lids person, and as I said, I love dogs. I'm allergic to them, but I love dogs. I just, I just think a more rural area would be a little bit better spot.
Thank you. Rachel, do you have anything to add?
Yes. I don't know why I should direct this. Probably.
She's directed up here.
There is actually, there's two daycares in Massachusetts, It's Possible and Canine Capers. These two daycares, they have no margin policy. You walk in there, you can hear a dog and growl. Now, I was trained by the owner of Canine Capers through his other staffs. And like I said before, I've been doing this for ten years, and I've lost my hearing. So my goal is to keep the barking down. I don't, you know, the dogs will not be outside unsupervised, barking their heads off. Any barking that it would be immediately dealt with. And my staff, like I said before, they've been working with me for a year, two years, three years. A lot of them have taken, I've taken on private training lessons, a lot of them with dogs who bark. We have a very simple, but yet very effective means of teaching a dog what the word quiet means. And it's actually a very effective cue in the methods that we use. It's very, it's simple, efficient, and it's consistent, and it's very effective to the dogs. I invite anybody to go to Canine Capers or It's Possible, and you will be extremely, like, floored by the silence. And this is because you keep small playgroups, you keep small staff-to-dog ratio, so that way the staff can focus on their small group of dogs. Ten dogs, one dog's barking, one quick little play bark, you know, all that requires is a little body block to just invade the dog's face. Something like, dogs bark for different reasons. They have motivations for it. So when you went to go pick your dog up, all these other dogs saw your dog leave. Everybody, of course, all the dogs are going to go nuts because, you know, they get jealous in their own little doggy way. But with my facility, the number one thing that I'm going to limit is visual stimulation, and that is the number one thing for dogs barking. Territorial, play barking, and also like fear barking. Those are several of the main types of barking that you will find in a dog. The number one barking that you'll find in daycare is territorial or high arousal, meaning visual stimulation. My friend's going home and I'm not. During go-home time, the dogs will have their downtime, so they're not going to see their friends. Each dog will be brought out individually, so that way we won't even bring them out to mom or dad until they're calm, cool, and collected. I've worked with many dogs who would scream on the way out, and it might have taken me a week or two, but that dog knew that she needed to be in a nice down with a little base on the floor and quiet in order to proceed. And with consistency, you can teach any dog this. And I completely understand, you know, the valuation of property and whatnot. And that, you know, being next to a doggy daycare, I can completely understand your concerns with that. If I had the money, I would offer to buy up your house so I can have my staff live next door. It'd be easier for them that way. But I know everybody's number one concern is the barking. And behavior management is my number one concern, and barking falls underneath that. And I don't want to devalue anybody's home property value. I don't want, you know, it's a nice day in June, and you're out on a porch drinking your tea. I don't want you to hear dogs barking. So this is why I say my staff and myself are very consistent in making sure that, you know, appropriate behaviors are being practiced. And, you know, any inappropriate behaviors felt immediately, efficiently, and kindly and humanely. And that's my goal, to be a community center. I know there's a lot of dog owners in the area, and there's a huge cultural gap. And my mission is to explain the differences between dogs and people, so that way it holds up with relationships, which include, you know, how do I get my dog stopping from barking when they're going in and out of daycare, that sort of thing. And it's not just going to be drop your dog off and come up. We're going to give behavior, you know, your dog, you know, they're okay and sits. We need to work on downs. They barked a lot. We're going to work on that, okay? You need to teach your dog how to wait because they keep holding out of gates. Here's how to do that. So it's not going to be a, bring me your dog, I'll take your money, and they'll do whatever all day. It's about bettering the human-dog relationship. And, you know, as a trainer, I like to teach people, I like to teach people about the cultural differences. And that in itself, you know, I believe would be a huge benefit to the community.
Thank you.
As I understand it, Rachel, you'll have like thirty-five to forty dogs per daycare after a year and a half?
Oh, I'm thinking that probably is like a three-year number.
Well, your application says you would have fifteen within six months and then increase at five each quarter, which, as I figure, after a year and a half, that puts you at thirty-five. So whatever, call it thirty.
Those are over-exaggerated numbers because the bank does like to slash those types of numbers that I was taking.
Well, so call it thirty. Plus the boarding dogs, there would be, what, ten of those?
Yeah, no more than fifteen, but pretty around that.
So then you're up to over forty dogs, forty-five dogs even, conservatively, it seems. Assuming things go as you hope. So I don't understand two things then. One, how you could have individual containment areas for each one of them. And second, how you can have a small staff-to-dog ratio but only have three to five staff?
We have three, we have actually five different settings if you don't count the evaluations. If we keep a one to ten staff-dog ratio, that's forty dogs. If we, during boarding season, numbers of course pick up. So that, you know, that, there will be a small fluctuation with that. There will always be, you know, a lobby of staff members. So that person technically doesn't count as part of the dog-to-human ratio. The person in the lobby receiving the dogs is not part of that ratio. Now, with those numbers, ten dogs may seem like a lot, you know, a lot of people just have one dog. Or like, your friend brings over a second dog, and you're like, oh my God, that's a lot of dogs. But ten dogs in the daycare environment really is a small group, which is a very easily manageable group in, getting back to behavior, it encourages.
So would they each have their own enclosed area as you've described?
The boarding dogs would have their own enclosed area to sleep in. The daycare dogs would be separated according to temperament, size, play style. You know, there's some little dogs who play like big dogs, so we're going to put them in medium dogs. But during the nap time, you know, they will have their each enclosed area, whether it's a crate or four-by-four or six-by-eight or four-by-six. Or if they're part of the boarding program and they sleep the staff program, then they would be hanging out with staff for the nap time. But the outdoor area, there's three separate outdoor areas, one main large area for big dogs, and two smaller areas. For the small dogs, one for mainly for a boarding let-out area. And all fencing has stockade fencing, and we'll have stockade fencing around the exterior.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Yes.
My name is Anita Liefman. I'm a resident of East Hampton, but I work for the Franklin County CDC. And we worked with Rachel with her plan for the past seven months developing this idea. And we were skeptical, as a lot of you were, about this barking issue because it's part of a larger group. And we thought, gee, how do you have all these dogs that are barking? When we looked into it further, we looked into it using a lot of the research that we get. We got it at the UMass library, the Mintel report. It's, the way that Rachel is going to be doing this program is exactly what they're doing now in larger cities. If you go to New York and you go to places like Trump Towers, they have dog daycare in the lobby of these new high-rise apartment facilities. And it is actually the trend that more people as we go on will be dealing with dogs like Rachel intends to deal with dogs because this move back to urban areas, but also wanting to have a dog, it's all kind of getting rolled into your living space. And that's what they're projecting for the future, is that in large apartment complexes, there will be dog daycare available on-site. And it's going to be done by people using the methods that Rachel has really spoken about. I think the reason why we haven't seen those methods as widely used around here is that some daycare centers have the luxury of being in the middle of nowhere, where it's just not been an issue. But I was actually in New York. I visited the ones that are in the basement. There are six apartment buildings, and there are dog daycare in each one of those buildings. You could hear a pin drop. And it's by using these training techniques. And what they're saying is that then these tenants of these buildings then get to take the dogs to dinner with them. They're now allowing dogs in the, in the department stores in New York. And even in Manchester, Connecticut, in Evergreen Walk, it's a dog-friendly, walking, outdoor mall. So it is the trend, and the dogs that are going to these different places and availing themselves these opportunities are being trained by the likes of Rachel and the methods that they're using currently to train dogs for the new experiences going forward. You know, we've been talking about in North Hampton, a lot of people allow dogs in their stores. I mean, ten years ago, that was really not a priority, but people want to take their dogs everywhere. And so from the CDC standpoint, we work with about ten other people that have dog daycare and boarding and grooming facilities. And this is absolutely the wave of the future. And Rachel has captured this probably better than anyone we work with in terms of understanding the ramification of returning a well-behaved dog back to the owner who can then go to a restaurant and sit outside with their owner, can go to stores and provide that companionship that all the research shows that people really want. So we were very excited. We wanted very much to be involved financially with this business. We are here to create small business and create jobs, and we felt very strongly about it. She's going to be self-financing, but we absolutely would have put our money where our mouth is on this one. She understands it, and she's right on trend for what people want to the quality of life in their community in this type of facility.
Okay, thank you.
I did not include this in any of the paperwork that I submitted, but I do have an article about noise in the animal shelter environment. And it essentially covers everything that I have said about, you know, visual stimulation, making sure that the psychological, you know, stressors of the dog have been, it's all highlighted. So I don't know if a decision would be made tonight or if there would be further deliberations. But those, I did do a bunch of research on barking. And, you know, my general knowledge of, you know, how to keep dogs in a low-stress environment and how to keep barking down to a minimum. And then I did a bunch of additional research, and that's what I came up with. So if there's any question about, you know, professional opinion on how to reduce barking and what, and like what kind of environment is best for a dog and how like structurally-wise and floor plan-wise, how to design a facility in which that inhibits sound and that creates the least visually distracting area, so that way the dogs remain as quiet as possible. I also have to put notes too if you prefer those. Because that's a long article.
Thank you.
I have a question I'd like to ask Rachel.
Yeah, if you can ask the board and then we'll deliberate and then Rachel can wrap up.
Okay, okay. My question is, of all the dogs that are coming in for daycare, people are paying for daycare a certain number of hours. daycare a certain number of hours per day, how many of those dogs are you actually going to be training with your, the principles of behavioral management? Which sounds great to me when you're working with individual dogs, but if you have thirty or forty dogs, how are you going to train them? Are, is there going to be group training, or can you only do it with individuals? And do you have to pay extra for this training if you bring your dog in for daycare?
The training, basic sits-downs, excuse me, name recognition, and wait at gates, those are all training that come with the daycare program. Because the groups have a very small, you know, one to ten ratio, it's, I can get a group of twenty-five dogs to sit wait off a gate eight feet, believe it or not, believe it or not, twenty-five dogs, seriously. Quiet, sitting, waiting, no pushing, no shoving, no yelling. It's, it's, it's possible. And if you get a dog who has a hard time learning that wait command, then an additional staff member would come in the room, occupy the other dogs while that one person was working on the sit-waits, or, you know, the wait at the gates. Another very important part of our program is going to be the come-sit, which every staff member is going to practice at least a dozen times with every dog in the room. And this is, what this is, is there's going to be a treat bucket in a corner of the room. The staff member's gonna say, come, sit. All ten dogs are gonna come running towards them and sit. So that way, if a new dog's coming in, or a new dog's going out, there's no, there's no issues at the gate. So that way, the dog can, if a dog's going home, they can leave without any kind of gate issues. There's no extra charge for that. We do have a boarding training program where we, you know, can teach basic obedience to advanced obedience. We also have, you know, a variation of training classes, which is separate from our daycare program. But our daycare program actually includes all that reinforcement of, you know, non-behavioral sit-down, wait, and then name recognition as well. And we also practice it in daycare, so it's a higher distraction environment, so that way your dog will actually listen to you better, you know, out and about, because they have that practice in that distraction level.
Thank you. Okay, since we had a lanky discussion, all things dog care related, questions from the board, discussion on board?
I think it would be useful for Carolyn to clarify what this special, particularly we need to, the context of what we're doing here, with the special permit as opposed to the site plan. I know Mark did a minute ago, but so in, in the conversation, there's been different opinions on whether this is an appropriate use of the product. So would you give us some words on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of, your jurisdiction under special permit is to determine whether a proposed use, which is identified as a zoning as potentially allowable if, if you can show that you're meeting the special permit criteria in the zoning, it's not by right, and you just go through a process. It's special permit for a reason, and that is, doesn't make sense, the proposed use in the given location, including the context, are technical issues addressed, are issues about impacts to, you know, open space around neighbors, you know, does it fit in the context of the sustainability plan and the zoning? So, you know, issues about, I think noise is, is, you know, important. I think they've addressed some of the traffic concerns in terms of the curb cuts. I think that certainly seems like a reasonable compromise to only have one of those driveway cuts used for, you know, shuttle activity. But I think in terms of, excuse me, impact to the neighborhood and the proximity to other houses, I think that's probably the crux of your decision at this point, is does it, given all the things that you've heard, and, and sort of the context of the neighborhood, does it make sense here?
And would you be able, and I know it was before your time, can you tell me how the commercial business of the Girl Scouts was granted for that lot when it was given? And what, was that a, what, what's that history that I, that creates this business in that residential area?
Well, it doesn't really, well, so the Girl Scouts were granted a variance back in the late sixties, and we actually do allow membership clubs by special permit in this district now, so we probably classify it as that. But it is sort of a back office use, it's a different type of commercial use. So there are sort of limited kinds of uses that might be allowed in the rural residential district, in which this is located. The kennel use is one of them. For personal, yes, I mean, it depends. So a horse, if you have a horse farm, it's a commercial agricultural kind of use, that's allowed in the district. But that has a whole nother, that's under, that could potentially be, fall under the agricultural provisions of the zoning ordinance, which is very forgiving for those types of uses. So it's a little, it's a different kind of, the way the zoning deals with it is a different classification than kennel.
Does kennel fall under agricultural?
No.
And if the Girl Scouts were coming to us today instead of this business, they would still be, they would today have to get a special permit to do the, the business that's there?
Right, I will double-check to confirm, but we would probably look at it as a, well, we would either look at it as a membership club, which requires special permit actually from the city council. It's possible they might fall under the exemptions for educational use depending on what part of, depending on the nature, but it might fall under that exemption as well. So it's a, it's a, really a different animal. Okay, so thank you.
Carolyn, isn't that important for us to know the use category? I mean, this is the closest thing we have in the ordinance, is a kennel, right?
Yep, yep.
Kennel does appear under the overall category of agricultural use, but, but they're not all agriculture. I mean, it just happens to be, but still, it's, it's, that's why they're here before the planning board, because it's a kennel in the RR zone.
Right.
So, but what, okay, what about, what about section ten point eight of, of the ordinance? Does I read that that requires ten acres for a kennel? And also no less than a hundred feet from the side lot line?
So the, it does group commercials, stables, and kennels. We've always, whenever we've had a commercial stable, we've looked at it for this ten, for this minimum acreage. And of course, everything else in here is about stables and riding rings.
Minimum, yeah. Size of minimum acreage for any of these things, is that correct?
Well, but this, actually, I didn't catch this before, but the way that it is grouped here would raise the question that, you know, potentially that you need ten acres. And I know we've had, interestingly, we've had kennel applications come before that didn't have ten acres. They weren't, I don't know if you guys remember on Kennedy Road?
Yeah.
There was one, and it actually didn't get approved because of the same issue of proximity to houses. But, yeah, the way this was lumped together, it says the minimum acreage is ten acres, so they have two.
Seems excessive, but still, that's, seems to be what it says.
Yeah, I was just about, so if a special permit was granted for kennel use, does that mean that someone, another business could come in, another kennel could come in in this location?
Well, typically, yes, the use, the permit would be granted to the use, however, you would have the authority to limit it to this specific applicant, that doesn't happen all the time. But, you know, you've heard obviously that there are different ways of keeping dogs and, and in kennel situations or pet daycare. So you would have the ability to do that.
Would have the ability to do that.
To, to limit it to a particular applicant, so that if, if they left, moved on to a different, bigger place, the permit would stay with the property, if you permitted that.
I have another kind of, I don't know, technical question. What, the traffic mitigation, is I, isn't that part of the site plan approval? It's in eleven point six?
It is part of site plan, and when you file for a special permit, site plan is also part of that, so you need to meet the criteria of the site plan approval.
So they don't need to submit a site plan, but they need to satisfy the requirements?
Well, in lieu of, that's the other thing, you could, you could grant waivers to a full engineered site plan because no, no, you know, there's no new construction on the site except for the fencing in the back now, as we see. So typically, someone could submit, you know, plot plan that was, that was as shown versus, if it's new construction, you definitely need to see survey plans to include changes and things like that. They weren't initially planning any changes to the site, because everything's gonna be internal to the building, except for the exterior.
So should they have asked for a waiver with site plan requirements?
Technically, we ask applicants to please identify all the waivers that they're asking for, but you, it's not required ahead of time. You can certainly identify all the waivers in the site plan that are necessary.
But that's how the traffic mitigation comes in, through the site plan requirements?
Carolyn referenced Kennedy Road, I don't know how many of you were with us when we did that. We, I think in, in recent, I mean, the last maybe three or four years, Carolyn, we had a dog kennel, dog daycare on Kennedy Road, which was very similar in nature to this applicant. And we had a dog grooming, I think on North Maple, which was more recent, which was by appointment only. You'd make an appointment, bring your dog, it's groomed, it'll just soon leave. It wasn't a daycare, or your dog's gonna stay overnight. But similar issues in that, in, in, in both presentations, I think the board felt, great idea, good application, well-thought-out, well-structured, wrong location, ultimately is the wrong location. And this feels to me similar to that in that regard. I think on a special permit, some of the criteria that needs to be met, that we should be aware of is, will the use not unduly impair the integrity or character of the district? Will the use be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance? I think you could argue that it wouldn't be, just because of its proximity. I, I love everything about this, I love, I like the idea, I like the layout, I like the plan, I like, I like everything about it, except where it is. And I think where it is, stepping back, special permit thinking, you know, is this the best, is this the right use of this parcel in this area? And I don't think it is because of that reason.
I tend to agree with you, the house on the right is very close, and it will have an impact on that property value right here. In terms, and, and the noise, in terms of the noise across the street, and the manner, that would concern me so much because it's a high-traffic area, it's a pretty noisy area. But the fact that there's someone forty feet away there, and change, potentially change that person's life, I agree with you.
Would it be possible to approve it with requirements for landscaping and requirements that the shuttle be used regularly?
We can impose criteria on the acceptance of the special permit.
Can't, but people use the shuttle, right?
Yeah, that's.
I think the landscaping would work, I think the show is not measurable enough. I think potentially if you were to.
People will sign off, I guess.
But it, it would be something that if you were to approve, and, you know, you did say there's no traffic mitigation, that, and it says year two comes around, and they come back and they say, look how many people are on the shuttle, services are away, we can, is that enough of a mitigation to offset the total amount of payment in lieu of actually making physical improvements? You could certainly entertain that conversation once you've seen something that's actually in place and have data to back that up. But I think at the front end, you couldn't do that. It would be hard to do that.
Public comment is still open, does everybody? Okay, so that means the public comment portion of the evening's over, so now there's just an internal discussion with the board. Any questions?
I thought I knew the property, but just to make sure, I mean, I knew where it was, obviously, but I wanted to go look at it, and I drove around it like before coming in. It is tight, even getting that many cars in that parking lot and being turned around.
I'm not, I mean, the van's been well-pawed out, how to turn that. But it's not really the parking, or the traffic that worries me, I think that will get dealt with. Route nine is so busy, you'll absorb the traffic without much notice, but I think the neighborhood is just residential neighborhood. And so I, I'm swayed by the neighbor saying it's, it's an unknown, but it's also, we do know dogs. And I, I think, I, I'd love to think my dog was going to behave the way I want it to, but I just find that hard to guarantee. I mean, I think, no pun intended, but Rachel's hearing's lost for a reason. She's more to the part of the dog.
But at the wrong places, because they didn't know. So, I mean, it, it's a heartfelt story. I, I want this business to succeed, it's, it's a great business idea, but I'm, I'm swayed by the neighborhood.
I, I drove up there yesterday, and I, when I left, I was more concerned about the traffic than I am right now after hearing the plan and looking at it. I still don't know if I buy it a hundred percent, but it's been thought out, and I agree with you with the Route nine traffic, that it would, it would be absorbed to a certain extent, and they're trying to, trying to limit it with, with the shuttle and the service, and I get all that. But I keep going back to, to the precedent we set on, on North Maple and Kennedy, but the Kennedy Road was very similar. It was more rural, it was a smaller operation, and yet it still was the same argument, argument that ultimately it was just too close to the neighboring homes, and it was a rural residential area, and this isn't a rural residential operation. And so if you could take this.
Not on our property.
Right.
Well, and I guess that's the other thing, is I, I have a women's court that details what happens to conservation land, but, I mean, I don't really think that this business can, I mean, I'm somewhat concerned about encouraging the, the dogs into the conservation way. I, I would, I mean, we've had enough experience with this around town, and I think we've seen that it creates problems too.
The noise obviously is, but everybody's concerned. On the other hand, the next term, Ivy herself said that in the summer she can't sit out on her porch because it's too noisy from all the traffic. So it's kind of hard to argue both ways. I mean, it's such a, because of its location, there's a huge amount of ambient noise, background noise. I don't know, it seems, I don't know. If Rachel accomplishes what she hopes to, even if she only half accomplishes it, the additional noise might not be any noticeable, any more noticeable than the small amount of additional traffic under a ton. than the small amount of additional traffic under the tunnel.
Anybody else? I think put this to vote.
Well, actually, of course, so the ordinance that Alan brought up, I mean, yeah, it's the...
The, I think Alan rightly points out, the minimum acreage is ten. So we would fall on that, which, you know, they, even if, I think, they obviously had forty acres before they gave to the city, and now they have two. I think the other issues of proximity to house lots would still be the same, just because of the way the property is oriented. But that is, was certainly an oversight on our part.
Lead the way.
So I'm here for, pose that we approve a special permit? And we're gonna vote yes or no, or if you...
Anybody you want to.
But then that doesn't include my vote. I move we approve special permit for kennel dog daycare at 241 Engle Road, please map ID six dash forty-four.
All those in favor?
Oh, did a second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry. Second, Ann? All those in favor? opposed? Thank you.
I miss what my last...
She just told him he couldn't fuck on out, she got the girl behind you to get on.
I mean, I didn't mean that.
I hope yes.
Everyone, we still have some business to do, so it's gonna be a discussion. Thank you.
I bet they did some meetings.
Yes, I have.
Could you put the quicker one?
Okay, we have a eight o'clock scheduled for a site plan amendment for the CDS facade glazing at CDS three sixty-six King Street, North Hampton, map ID eighteen D dash forty-seven.
Good evening. Carolyn Parker, Free Lorian Ave, Worcester, Massachusetts. Here representing CDS. Basically, CDS has, over the last couple of years, gone out and made some modifications to their storefront. In the past, it used to just be white. The reason the storefront is white is due to, on the left-hand side of this particular building, we have the interior, the transaction area, and the photo center. So what they do is they want to have some type of coverage so that people can't see in there. And then on the right-hand side of this store, they actually have like the Maybelline and the taller things that put their lipstick and eye makeup and all that. So that's why on the right-hand side, the window covering is a little higher. What they've done in the past is they normally would put a red, you know, just red with CDS on the windows, but in towns like yours, what they have is what they call a historic window print. And it's just, it's not your historic pictures, but it's just pictures of other historic buildings, of which I cannot name any of them, so. But that's what they'd like to put up on the windows. We did get approved earlier from the Zone Board of Appeals. It was questionable whether, you know, the, the actual covering is a sign or it was just the CDS. But we was to say we did get approved by them earlier, so they're just trying to make it look a little more appealing to the public. The CDSes can't be seen from the roadway, they're not illuminated, they're just there to cover up what was, is currently white.
And Carolyn, what's the history in this, as far as how it was covering up the white, how it was white to begin with, when it got initially started?
It wasn't white, there was a portion, so originally, when CDS came into the planning board, it was under, highly business district guidelines prior to the current ones, but there was still requirement, that there'll be a certain percentage of the building be glass. And so they presented the plans elevations to the board for approval, which were, was the set that I emailed out earlier today. And so some of the window, a portion of the window, I think was frosted glass, and the other was clear, see-through glass. And so the, the intention was to meet that criteria of the ordinance, to have, you know, the view from, as from a pedestrian or perspective on King Street as a storefront. But the board doesn't really dictate what happens inside the store, and so I think from pretty early on, there was at least some, you know, display shelving on the inside of the store that was at that front.
It's backed up, so that you're just getting the back.
Right. So it's sort of been that way for a number of years. The permit was granted in two thousand two, two thousand three, so then that, and then constructed then, so. The intention was to have a storefront window, you know, that's either seeing into the store or having some kind of display window.
So what we're talking about is basically just a nicer display?
Right.
Or it's being proposed, it's not presented.
Can I clarify there, but this is not advertising. I mean, that's the conversation that went on at five o'clock. It's, they're not, they're not putting text, they're not putting words.
They are putting words, but your jurisdiction is not about the words, it's about creating more of a capacity to, you know, closing up more of that, that window than it already...
The window can't see through.
I mean, there's, there's still portions of the window that you can see through, but if they're up high, you can't really see that much that high. So this is, does it provide a different, you know, better visual context than just a white blank space?
Well, I mean, one problem is that the transaction area is there, and whether it's cigarettes displayed there or something, I mean, they, I don't know if you know about CDS, but CDS does not have backrooms any longer. Like, back in the day, I used to do material handling, and they, everything would, you know, they would have a backroom and they would store stuff. Now, everything comes in in a tub. So at night, they restock the shelves, so whatever's on the shelf is all they have in the store selling. And then I was gonna go in the bathroom and go, oh, I'll get you another thing, toothpaste, you know, toothpaste. So they utilize every square inch of that space. And it seems to be working for them. Because I know I spend forty bucks on their money.
Questions for the board? Seems like a pretty straightforward one.
It does. I mean, we've talked all up and down King Street. There, I mean, in some sense, you do want the buildings to be inviting, and I think that's where this came from, is to try not to wall off the business inside box, but...
It's already done, so. It's just done, I mean...
Right. Okay. There's no public comment because everybody...
I hate when that happens.
So, if there are any questions, motion, or closed public hearing, I guess, you know?
Did we have one? I move a closed public hearing.
Second, John, all in favor? Thank you. Motion?
I move we approve site plan amendment for CDS decide glazing CDS six three sixty-six King Street, map ID eighteen D dash forty-seven.
Second, John, all in favor? Thank you.
See, short, see? That's what I'm like. I know, and I apologize for getting up, but I can only sit so long, and I now gotta sit for another hour. Too much driving. What are you, a king doonuts, see, and they said, don't feel bad for me? My work week is done.
Do you have CDSs in Canton?
No, just me and my bud.
And I wondered.
We do have other business.
And quickly, the stuff on the backside, but it's terrible, isn't it? And then using it as storage space.
Carolyn, we still have, we still have unfinished business. How much of that unfinished business?
Well, let me throw it out there, and just see what you think. So the next one, item was, you guys talked about this, I don't know, several months ago, that the hanging projecting signs over Main Street, it's really pedestrian, it's the blade sign.
Right.
Oh, and street acceptance too. We definitely need to do street acceptance, so if you want to pick one, that'd be... But the blade signs were, I mean, really, the only issue you guys had was, you didn't, you weren't sure, I think, about number four, but you weren't convinced that the size was not going to be so overwhelming and create lots of visual clutter. So that's why we gave you examples. Now, if you, we can certainly put that off for another discussion and pull it off in that public hearing agenda for April fourteenth, if you want to spend more time on it, that's fine. There's no real rush to it, I just thought, all right, well, how many joined public hearing? Let's just...
Yeah, because we've talked about it before, we did.
We talked about it, it's just that, we just, you know, we, you guys didn't like the big size sign that was initially proposed, so we scaled it back in that last conversation, but you still wanted to see examples of what, what might that look like.
Well, you just said out there, you think?
Yeah. So, you know, if you want to go over it, or if you're fine with it, we can go ahead, and then we can have a fuller discussion in the public hearing if you're not, so I can go ahead and put it forward if you want, if you're comfortable with...
Yeah, this is just a movement forward so we can talk about it again, but we've reduced the, the initial square footage that you threw out, we were uncomfortable with, that's been addressed.
Right.
Yeah. I think I read in there that you can only put one of these per building. Is that right? Is that in there?
Right. Unless you get a special permit. So you, there's always a special permit avenue, the point of this is that...
But what if you have a really big building? I mean, why can't you get X per feet or something? I guess that was my only thought, because if, other than, other than one building, I think there's some required requirement.
So this is in addition to wall signs that you're allowed. So we allow front wall signs on the face of a building, but any additional signage, so if you wanted a sign hanging over the sidewalk in addition to the facade sign, that would trigger a special permit. So what this language would do is eliminate the special permit for adding a blade sign or a projecting, you know, sidewalk or wall sign, so that you can have two without coming to the zoning board first. And then that wall sign has, we have different thresholds depending on your facade of your establishment. So you're 10% of the facade, or 100 square feet, whichever threshold you get to first. This, we only have one foot projections allowed for blade signs before, at this point, that's all we have. And if you have a wall sign, you would need a special permit just for that one, one foot projecting wall sign. So this relaxes the zoning to the extent that it allows you, by right, to have both signs, a facade and a projecting sign, and it also expands the size of the allowed projecting sign. So I think there hasn't, it doesn't seem that there's always been, that there's been an issue about having a really big projecting sign, but that's still, if you feel like you need something bigger, you can still go to the zoning board for a special permit.
And in central business, if you have a big building, but three establishments, each establishment, establishment gets a blade sign.
Only if it's on the first floor, is that right?
Well, you, you could get a wall, you don't, the point of a projecting sign is really pedestrian-oriented, so if you're on the second floor, you know, the point, the projecting wall sign...
You want pedestrians to come up the stairs and buy what you're selling.
Right, but you would have a door on Main Street, and you could have a sign on your door as well.
Not a blade sign. It says only businesses on the first floor may have a blade sign.
Right. Unless you were to file for a special permit.
So you need a recommendation?
Yeah, to move it over.
I'd like to see it go to public comment.
So is that a motion?
I move we take the blade signs as revised and present them for public comment.
Introduce them to council?
Introduce them to council.
Let me read that one.
Does this go forward as a recommendation from the planning board?
It's a sponsor by the planning board.
Sponsored by, so...
Which implies a recommendation.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't imply one way or the other way you, the way you would vote on it, because you would be taking public comment. So if there's something in the public comment that changes your perspective, you have, it doesn't mean you can't move a different way once it comes to the floor.
Can I just ask another question? But, you know, there's all these bullets and all these things, you know, and so if later on, we wanted to remove one of the requirements, does that require a vote of everyone, or at, from this point going forward, in other words?
Well, if this goes forward to, to public hearing, and through the public hearing, it makes sense to eliminate one of those bullets or modify it in some way. That can happen as it goes through the process. Again, depending on the type of change, if it's more stringent than what was advertised, it sort of depends, this one's becoming different, but it may trigger going back for public hearing, it may not. So you could definitely make modifications through the process before it gets, even when council has it on the floor, in their final vote, they can make changes to it.
So typically, when something like this is presented to us, we don't have to be unanimous in how we feel about it, that the wording's 100% right. Usually, initially, we'll, we'll get feedback, some things just right off the bat don't make sense to us, or we're confused, we need more input to, to better understand what's being presented. We go back and forth, back and forth, and then it gets to a point where at least we're comfortable with it, moving forward and initiating the discussion, and, and knowing that it's going to come back to us again in a more formal and final instance where we can act on it. So right now, we're not so much acting on it as letting it go by.
So was there a second?
No, there wasn't a motion, second from John. All in favor? Okay. Now I have street acceptance. Moser, Olander Ford, and Village Hill.
So those street acceptance petitions, the reason why there's so many of them is that they're little bits. If you remember the Ford Crossing, which is the northern road at Village Hill now, also connects all the other pieces together as the east-west road, so it connects Moser on one end, Olander on the other end, Village Hill in the middle. But they technically came through as four separate petitions.
This is because they're building out in that direction at this point, and they've gotten to that.
Right, and they, but they built the road that you all approved, the subdivision, they had all these little stubs to connect to all the other streets that had already been built. So what this means is that they've finished construction, it's been inspected, DPW has looked at it, they submitted the, the plans for street acceptance and the surveys and the title work, and only city council can, can approve or accept a street to be a public street. So this request is for city council to accept these little bits, including the Long Ford Crossing for street acceptance, or as a public street. And it went to city council, was referred out to both Board of Public Works and Planning Board for comment and recommendation. So what you would be doing is making a recommendation back to city council as to whether or not the city should take these streets and street stubs as public streets. We're, from a staff level, we're all satisfied with the, the engineering reports and the construction reports showing that they've built it in accordance with the plan.
The DPW have any comments at all?
No, we ironed out everything, they're satisfied. It hasn't gone to the board yet, but I believe DPW recommendation will be to their board. as public streets. We're, from a staff level, we're all satisfied with the engineering reports and the construction reports showing that they built it in accordance with the plan.
The DPW have any comments at all?
No, we ironed out everything. They're satisfied. It hasn't gone to the board yet, but I believe DPW recommendation will be to their board to recommend acceptance. And so you guys will make your separate vote. Board of Public Works will make their vote, then city council will ultimately, it'll come back to city council. They'll consider what both boards recommended and then make a determination. But all along the streets of Village Hill, it's always, there's always been the intention that they become public streets.
This is just connecting the top in what's already operating at the bottom.
Right, right. So the other pieces have already been accepted.
It's already there.
Yeah.
I'm on a roll tonight. You want one?
Keep it going, keep it going.
I move we recommend the city council that they accept Mojer, Olander Ford and Village Hill.
Second, Ann, all in favor, just for consistency?
It happens to be the person that brings the agenda.
I know. I think that's it. So we've got some.
Oh, do we have some next or no?
No matter.
We didn't have a meeting.
All right.